Board of Education, Wayne County Board of Education meeting in order. Start with the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Here's me Father, we thank you for this opportunity to be here tonight, you have the business of the school system, Lord, we just thank you for each board member and each one that's here, it's probably a special blessing, hoping and God just be with us as we go through this business and we just pray that everything we do tonight would bring honor and glory to your name, that's in Jesus' name I pray.
Public comments. Recognition, we have any?
Summer months, we don't typically have students come in, but these are two young men, I do want to mention their recent accomplishments and have them join us at a later board meeting to get their official recognition. First is Phoenix Goffey. Phoenix competed at the Kentucky High School Athletic Association Esports Championships, and he was the NBA 2K State Champion, and then he advanced to the National Esports Championship and made it all the way to the semifinals of the National Esports Championship, so congratulations to Phoenix, he's a way at Governor Scholar right now. And the other young man I want to mention is Nate Chriswell. He was named the state runner-up in FFA Crete speaking at the state FFA convention last week, and Nate's playing baseball tonight, so we'll have these guys join us maybe in August and give them their official recognition. That's two amazing accomplishments by both of them. I was lucky enough, the FFA sponsors invited me to come to the leadership banquet that they had at the opening of the state convention, and I happened to be in Lexington for superintendent's meeting that day, and the timing worked out for me to be able to stop by and go to the luncheon and do a tour of everything, and it's just really neat, got to go to the first session of the convention with them. It's a great reminder of why those type activities are so important for our students, so.
Item number four be superintendent's report on instructional issues.
Okay, you've got the personnel report in your packet, obviously we're in hiring and retirement season and all that, so a lot of moving pieces right now. Just some updates on some construction things. The lights for the football field, the equipment is set to ship on July the 21st, and so they tell us, Musco tells us that they're on track to have those ready to go for the first home game, so we will hope that that happens. You may have also noticed that we've done some work on the grass down there, and they've re-soaked some Bermuda, really need some hot sun shiny days, I've had a lot of rain since it's been so, but it sounds like we're going to get that over the next week or so, so hopefully that will help that come along. The ATC Safety Corridor Project, we've been talking about that for about three months now, as soon as we have a finalized set of plans from DECO, we'll be ready to put that out to bid. That's not something that we'll do with a construction manager, that's more of a small-scale project, probably have two or three different bid packages for that, so that will be coming soon, as soon as we have those plans ready. And then, just want to give you an update on the status of Walker. We're still waiting on the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing plan revisions, I've actually talked with Alan Brown at DECO today, and he had been in contact with GRW Engineering today. Just to kind of bring you up to speed on that, the HVAC system that was originally drawn in the plans had to be changed because since the plans were originally drawn, there was a code change, and so they had to move to a different system. And so when GRW went to their manufacturer that manufactures the equipment, they sent back some things, within there were some discrepancies with the design, it weren't going to work, and so it's been a bit of back and forth between GRW and the manufacturer, but Chris Boggs with GRW today sent an email saying he thought they would have all that equipment lined up hopefully by tomorrow, and then they need about two more weeks to finalize those met plans from there, and then, once that happens, it's about a four-week, the bid process is about four weeks. So if you add all that up, best-case scenario, it would probably be mid-August before we would be ready to award bids, and obviously that's later than what we had hoped for, but that is where the project stands now. So we'll continue to keep you updated on that, and hopefully by next month's meeting that we will be in the bid process.
Okay.
That's everything.
Item number five is approval of district funding assurances for Kentucky Department of Education.
This is basically just a document we have to sign off on each year that says that we're going to follow all the rules we have to follow in order to accept these different pots of money, so I recommend we approve.
Anybody make a motion?
Make a motion to accept the district funding assurances for the Kentucky Department of Education.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Approval of contract, item number six, approval of a contract with Cumberland Family Medical Center Incorporated to facilitate school health plan for the 25-26 school year.
Again, I'd recommend we approve, this has been one of the better partnerships we've had, is what we have with Cumberland Family Medical and the health services they provide, so.
Same we had.
Same, everything's same, yes.
Somebody want to make a motion to approve item number six?
I make a motion, we approve the contract with Cumberland Family Medical Center for the school health plan for that coming year.
I have a second.
I have a second.
All in favor? Item number seven, approval of the first reading of the KSBA Policy Update Number Forty-Eight.
So each year, this is probably one of the most important services that KSBA provides, is they update our board policies on the basis of new laws and regulations, and so really, as we were discussing a moment ago, in most cases, we have no choice but to kind of accept these updates, have reviewed those, and of course, that was the topic of the webinar that we all did in here together a few weeks ago, so. John, since this is a first reading, does it actually require a motion?
Nope, we just go through it and then we're good to the next meeting.
Let's move on to item number.
I mean, I can give you, if you all want any details about anything, or any questions, we can talk about it. I mean, I've got notes of what I consider to be the highlights of it, but that's up to you guys, if you want to hear some of that, or if you're good with just what was in your packet.
Yeah, I'd like to hear what you have to say.
Okay, well, the biggest thing is, some of them in the back there will tell you, we just spent the last hour roughly, with hour and a half, with all the coaches in the district because of Senate Bill 181, and the reason we started with the coaches today is, when we come back from dead period, that's the second week of July, they're going to be the first people in the district to really interact with students. 181 substantially changes how anyone that works or volunteers at the school communicates with students, and students is vaguely defined, so I've advised my districts to treat students as anybody in pre-K through 12th grade in any school in Kentucky, and part of the reason for that is, right now, there's a lot of vagueness to how it's going to work, and what's acceptable, not acceptable, but if you're found to violate it, teachers can lose their teaching certificates, a volunteer, I mean, I think most of y'all volunteered in some capacity at the school, with the sports team, with the club, with a field trip, whatever, you're banned from volunteering at the district forever if you violate it, but it basically forces the district to adopt a social media platform for traceable communications, and any electronic communication will have to go through that platform unless there's a signed consent. We do have a consent form in part of that packet, so that if a parent wants to authorize their kid to communicate with a certain relative, for example, cousins are not listed at all as a relative under this statute, so there's no exception. If you had a first cousin that's a student at Wayne County High School, and you're a teacher, you couldn't text them anymore. If you're a Sunday School teacher, and this example I've given a lot, my daughter's Sunday School teacher is a teacher at Corbin Independent Schools, and every Sunday morning, she texts my daughter and everybody in their class, and says, "What do you want for breakfast?" Because she goes to Hardee's and buys a breakfast for Sunday School every Sunday morning, that's, she's done that for two or three years, my kids have been in her class, but she'll have to stop doing that in July if we don't go to Corbin School and file a form that says it's okay if she texts our daughter, even though my kids don't go to Corbin. Like it is any form of contact, and there's a, I think there's some fixes coming to it because it is really overbroad for what it's trying to stop, but it was passed with really good intentions, but passed in a hurry, and I think there were a lot of situations that are very common in Kentucky, like people that volunteer churches that also interact with students, people that, you know, in a community like Wayne County, you consider all of your cousins family, and you very well may text a lot of them. Another problem that's not really addressed, and I've discussed with people, like I've got middle school daughters, we were just kind of joking about before the meeting, Benton, y'all, well, all of y'all really have kids, and Joe's got grandkids that are in school, like if you sent your kid or grandkid to a friend's house and their cellphone dies, and they were to text a school employee, maybe it's their parent, "Hey Mom, phone died, I'm over here at Joe's," well, that's a communication, electronic communication outside the platform from a student's device to the teacher. And, you know, I had another teacher ask me, and this was over at Barberville, another one of my districts, she lives in a very rural area of Whitley County, and she said, "I got high school kids, when my son's friends leave, I always tell, 'You better text me when you get home, because I want to make sure you made it out of the no-service area alive.'" Now they can't text her anymore, so there's just a lot of.
Unless a consent form.
Unless a consent form.
Through the school system.
Yeah, and the problem we're going to run into is sports, and this is part of what we were meeting with the coaches, the consent has to be revocable at any time, and the reality is, someone could sign a consent today, two weeks later revoke it, and a coach send out a message and be in trouble because the consent was revoked. And so there's a lot of things, me and Mr. Dishman have been talking about this for weeks now, developing systems for employees to be made aware who's tracking, who's eligible, who's not, but we sat down with all the coaches for about an hour and a half, just going over the law, going over any questions they had about it.
Something will need to be signed to revoke one, if it takes a signature to have.
Yes, but then it's making, but then the thing we've got to do as a district, and this is what me and Mr. Dishman have been working on, is making sure systems are in place so those coaches know, but the easiest thing for the coaches is we have a very good app that works like the Reminds and the GroupMe's and some of the other apps, they're already used and banned, I think is another one that gets used a lot. It works just like that, but it will be an app that's approved and legal, so that the coaches can be good, and so what our real emphasis was, was try and use the app whenever you can, because inevitably too, as you all know, you get 15 kids on a team, 13 parents come sign it, and you'll have two that you couldn't drag down here to sign it for love nor money, and so then you're going to have to use the app once and the text message for the other, and it's just, if we get everybody, and for you all as parents with kids and multiple activities, instead of having to have five different apps because each coach is using a different one, if we get buy-in to using the app for the communication, you'll only need one app as the parent to know everything, all of your kids in the system are doing, no matter what sport, what activity, and so we really, Valerie took some time to show them how the app works, so that next week they can go over it with their kids and their parents before dead period starts, and hopefully we get some good buy-in there, because it will, it will make it easier on everybody in the long run if this is used, and it'll make it safer for our teachers, safer for our volunteers, because everything they say, there'll be a clear, clean record of what it was, and there can be no way it can be misconstrued, because we'll have the entire record at all times. Some other stuff you might hear about that was in these policy updates, Senate Bill 9 passed, and one of the updates deals with that, and that has to do with how we handle unused sick leave with the Kentucky Teacher Retirement Systems, there's some changes to how that formula is going to work. Senate Bill 207, amend definitions of conflict of interest for school employees that may have side jobs that could interact with the school system in some way. Senate Bill 19, has us implement a new moment of silence every day, of course, they can't, they can't by law put in a moment of prayer, but what they've done now is a moment of silence where students are allowed to pray and given that opportunity every morning, that's now a required policy that's in the packet. And what that bill also does too is, there are different programs going on all over the state, like Bible release, or where you get some sort of religious instruction. In that bill in the past, some of our attendance records could get messed up on students that participated in those programs, now if they participate, they're credited just like they're in school and all access, they're, granted, it's attendance as being present, we get the money as if they were present, and then also, they're given the legal opportunity to make up any miswork if they're attending some sort of moral instruction off-campus through those programs, so it's designed to make it easier for students to participate in those things, and the district not suffer consequence for making those opportunities available to students that wish to participate in those, and that will be in your policy updates. House Bill 208 is another one that we have new policies on, it talks about cellphone usage in schools, it will now, it will now force us to severely restrict cellphone usage by students when they're in the building, and it will limit that usage to emergency situations, when a teacher directs them to use it for educational purposes, or anytime a teacher authorizes, you know, they're on a field trip on a bus, teacher can say it's okay. Another thing that does is it now, I think we're probably doing this, but Valerie can answer this, we are required to block all social media sites on the district servers, so teachers or students won't be able to access social media while they're on campus, and that's part of the House Bill 208 cleanup. House Bill 684 went into effect, this could change things a little bit, used to if one of your school buildings was a voting precinct, you had to, the school staff could also report to work that day at the school, now the, like the principals or whoever can come in and count it as a workday, the building itself doesn't have to be closed if people come into work just because it's being used as a precinct, so that's a change from in the past. I'm not sure if we use our schools for precincts, but some places it's pretty common. KDE can now cap enrollment into virtual programs for districts, if you've got students outside your district doing virtual, that came about, you had some, specifically one district out in western Kentucky is a small independent district that had enrolled a substantial, I estimate, I believe it was around 1,000 students that lived outside their district into virtual education, so now KDE can cap that to kind of protect districts like us, so that, you know, half our student population doesn't attend Jefferson County Virtual Program and put our schools in jeopardy. There's a big change to student medication in some of this, KDE's now recommending that schools not even administer over-the-counter medication without signed consent from the parents and a medical professional's recommendation, and medical professionals define more as like a nurse prac, PA, or doctor, so even just giving basic Tylenol now to our nurses' office is going to be a little more complicated per KDE recommendations. And then, Senate Bill 73 is probably the only other big one really in this packet, and it just, it clarifies some reporting requirements on sexual misconduct situations, there were some potential reporting loopholes, and Senate Bill 73 basically closed those loopholes to make sure that if there's any chance of kids in danger, that the reporting is mandatory. And that's kind of the big, that's the big changes in all this packet, there's lots of small ones, I mean, as you all saw, I think it's somewhere around 200 pages worth of documents, so there's a lot to it, some of it will read just like the old policy, just with minor tweaks based on these new laws, but that's what I would call the highlight reel of changes, for the ones you'll actually potentially hear come about somewhere.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
We don't need any action on that.
Nope.
I guess, number eight, reading and approval of KSBA Procedure Update Number Twenty-Nine.
So the administrative procedures only require a single reading?
Correct.
So these are forms and things that will go along with the policy changes, so we can go ahead and approve those tonight.
Any motion?
Yes.
For love. Get a motion to for approval KSBA Procedure Update.
I make a motion to approve the KSBA Procedure Update Number Twenty-Nine.
Second.
All in favor? Number nine?
Real quick, if you don't care to, Benton, on update 48 on the policies, if you all look through these before next month in the readings, and you've got any questions about any of them, feel free to call me. Some of them, there are some leeway, if there's something you think you might want to see different, we can talk about it and see what we can do, but if you have questions, just know, feel free to reach out, and we can look at any changes you all may feel you want.
Approval of closure plan, closure of plan source account at Monastell Banking Company, what is this?
This was a bank account that we previously used to escrow retirement contributions, and I can correct on that, Jill, and the state's changed the way we do that, that those are now sent on a monthly basis, so this account is no longer needed.
Okay. Approval closure plan source account at Monastell Banking. Get a motion?
I make a motion to close the account at Monastell Banking, the plan source account.
I second the motion.
All in favor? Approval of amended IT Department salary schedule for the 25-26 school year.
So what this does is add that first column there that says IT Zero, it basically adds the entry level salary, the salary schedule we had was basically designed with the tech personnel that we had in mind at the time. Doug Smith's retirement a couple of years ago now, we'll be looking to add someone to replace him, because he was not replaced at the time of his retirement, and we needed an entry level salary category for that, so it's that IT Zero One, I think, on the attachment is the new category. It doesn't change anything about anybody else's salary, because all of the other current tech people were in two, three, four, or five already.
Doug Smith is irreplaceable. So I make a motion for the approval for the amendment, IT Department's salary schedule for 25-26 school year.
I second the motion.
All in favor? Approval of virtual instruction policy and procedures.
Okay, so there's an attachment there, these will be our local procedures for virtual instruction. As most of you know, if you've ever heard me talk about it, I'm not necessarily a fan of virtual instruction, but I also recognize that it's a reality that we have to deal with, and so myself, Ms. Kennett, Mr. Patton, Mr. Schumaker, who's at Learning Academy, spent a considerable amount of time this spring kind of wrestling with how we might do virtual better, and Mr. Schumaker is actually going to be taking over coordinating that, so that there is one consistent voice across the district, that was one thing that we ran into sometimes last year, was that different schools would say different things, because we didn't have a consistent set of procedures. So having Mr. Schumaker kind of coordinating that from WCLA, and then having this consistent set of procedures that we can use district-wide, what makes you eligible, and how, how do you, what do you have to do to stay on virtual, will help us do better with that, so recommend we approve.
We get a motion for approval of the virtual instruction policies and procedures.
I make a motion for approval of the virtual instruction policies and procedures.
Second.
I second the motion.
All in favor? Approval of traceable communication systems for Wayne County Schools.
Okay, so this is back to Senate Bill 181 once again, the law requires that the board approve the platform that is going to be used for this traceable communication, so you can probably see in the notes there on your KSBA, recommending that you approve these three parts of our traceable communication system, the first would be Class Dojo to be used at the elementary level, that's a platform that we have used for a number of years, and it meets the traceable qualifications. Secondly, approve the use of school email and Microsoft Teams, again, that meets traceable communication, so teachers can use that K through 12 to communicate with students, and in fact, if I'm just, I'm a teacher communicating with someone in my class, that would be the preferred mode, is to do it through school email. And then finally, the app that we were discussing earlier is called SportsU, and we would designate that for extracurricular and co-curricular activities, and so we've actually got the group set up in that and ready to go, so ask that you approve these three platforms as our traceable communication system.
I make a motion for the approval of those three named communication systems for Wayne County Schools.
I second.
All in favor? Approval, item number 13 is approval of capital funds request in the amount of $587,136.28 for the completion of the Bell Elementary HVAC Project.
So the original, the Bell HVAC Project, the original BG1 for that was $3.9 million, that included ESSR money, ultimately, by the time the project was completed, it ended up costing close to 4.6, and so the plan had been in place for a while to do a capital funds request to cover the rest of that amount, and so basically, this is just moving funds on paper from one, from the building fund where they're already at, over to the Bell Elementary Construction Account, because that account has to zero out at the end of the year, so.
Get a motion for that approval?
I make a motion to approval of the capital funds request for the completion of Bell Elementary Project.
I'm second.
This is the last request?
This, yes, that will, that was, that's it for the.
I'm second that.
All in favor? Approval of pay request to Dixie Roofing LLC in the amount of $573,703.86 for the Bell Elementary Roofing replacement project.
Okay, so this is a project that kind of, if you're like me, kind of forgotten about it, because it feels like it's been so long ago, but Dixie had never submitted a pay request, the only thing we had paid so far on this roof was to Trimco for some of the supplies that were bought early on, so this one and the next item, Dixie Roofing is actually the guys that come, is a company that comes and actually installs the roof, and Dixie LLC is a separate corporation that has, that provides materials, so you know, if you remember, we did a bond sale for this project, so the money has been sitting there waiting, and they have just now finally done these two pay requests.
Get a motion for approval of item number 14, pay request Dixie Roofing LLC.
We'd like to pay Dixie Roofing LLC in the amount of $573,703.86. seven-hundred-three dollars and eighty-six cents for the BG twenty-three dash four-nine-six at Bell.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Approval of pay request to Dixie LLC in the amount of one-hundred-eighty-one-thousand-nine-hundred-fifty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents for Bell Elementary Roof Replacement Project, BG twenty-three four-nine-six. Get a-
Again, I'll make the motion for this, pay request to Dixie LLC in the amount of one-eighty-one-nine-fifty-nine-eighty-four for Bell, the roof replacement project, BG twenty-three dash four-nine-six.
I second.
All in favor? Approval, item number sixteen, approval of the FAC, what is it, F-A-C?
Fact, fact pack, it's just the system that-
To close out, to close out the Bell Elementary Roof Replacement Project.
Yep, so this is just the final closeout on that project, now that all the bills are paid, that one is officially done, complete.
Motion for, I don't know, six, or-
I make the motion, go three for three, approval of the fact pack, BG four, project closeout for Bell Elementary Roof Replacement Project, BG twenty-three dash four-nine-six.
I second.
All in favor? Approval of food services meal prices and, oh, the meal prices for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Casey's not here, is she?
Yeah. You have those in your attachment, I would recommend we approve.
Item number seventeen, can we get a motion for it?
I make a motion, we approve the food services meal prices for upcoming school year.
I second the motion.
All in favor? Item number eighteen, Consent Agenda, approval of applications for emergency certifications for approximately sixty substitute teachers for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Eighteen B, approval of memorandum and understanding, MOU between Lake Cameron District Health Department and Wayne County School District, twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Approval, eighteen C, approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. Eighteen D, approval of claims of wages. Eighteen E, approval of the treasurer's report. Anybody like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda? Items A through E.
I make a motion to approve consent agenda, items eighteen A through eighteen E.
You have a second?
I second the motion.
All in favor? Want to make a motion for a German?
Make a motion to adjourn this report, man.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Shout out loud.